That's on. Don't talk too loud.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's four o'clock, but we still have people checking in, so we're gonna wait a little bit. And I did hear a phone going off, so I'd appreciate it if everybody would turn their phones off so we don't get interrupted. Okay, I'm told we got about fifteen, twenty people checking in yet. We started a second line, so we'll get going just as soon as we can. We wanna make sure everybody gets in here.
Oh my God.
Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order here. I'm told everybody's inside. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. Your interest in this project and annexation is certainly appreciated. Again, I want to remind everybody to please turn off your cellphones, and I'm gonna turn it over to the Zoning and Planning Commission Chairman Brad Miller to open his meeting.
Thanks for coming. Called the meeting to order. Roll call, please, clerk.
Brad Miller.
Here.
Brad Crustow. Karen Stillwell.
Here.
Bob Houghey.
Here.
Don Weber.
Here.
Bob Hornbeck.
Here.
Jim Hanlon. Corbin Webster.
Here.
Scott Caselli. And Jim Barnes.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the Plan Commission Attorney, Nathan Washburn, for a few things to say.
Good evening. I'm Nathaniel Washburn. I'm the attorney for the Marcells Zoning Board of Appeals and Plan Commission. As you can see from our agenda, we do have public comment, which is required for any open meeting, per the statute. The Plan Commission tonight is holding a meeting because there is a majority of a quorum present and in attendance for the special meeting of the City Council. Public comment is meant for agenda items, and our only agenda item this evening is our own attendance at the City Council's special meeting. If anybody would like to make a comment, they are, of course, welcome to. However, any comments for the annexation or annexation agreement hearing that is going to be pending momentarily before the City Council would be best reserved for that public hearing, so it makes it into the record, as the Plan Commission meeting is not going to be directly a part of that public record for that hearing. But now would be the opportunity, if there was anything specifically for the Plan Commission meeting, if anybody wanted to make a public comment. However, I would reserve that for the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll call the special meeting of the Marcells City Council to order. Clerk, read a roll.
Mayor Hollenbeck.
Here.
Commissioner Kaminsky.
Here.
Small.
Here.
Shibe.
Here.
Buckingham.
Here.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to our city attorney, Christina Cantland, for opening comments.
Good afternoon, folks. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We have a couple of housekeeping rules that we're going to share with you tonight. We've got a full house, as you can see, so I'm gonna run through those rules with all folks here tonight. Any individual who would like to speak should have checked in upon arriving at the hearing this afternoon. Speakers will be called in the order of check-in. However, we added some additional check-in sheets, so the folks towards that checked in later may be a little out of order, so we appreciate your patience. So please listen for your name when it's called. The city clerk is going to call up individuals three at a time. You're going to come to the podium to speak, and you're gonna line up against the wall right there to my immediate left. So Speaker One will come to the podium when called. Speakers Two and Three will be in line against the wall. Please keep an appropriate distance from each speaker. If you did not check in but would like to speak, please quietly proceed back to the back corner. Catherine will be there to assist you to get on a sign-up sheet. All individuals are going to be allowed the opportunity to speak. The goal of this hearing today is to hear from the public. Comments must be related to the matter we are here to discuss this afternoon, which is the annexation of approximately 716 acres to the city of Marcells. Any individual making comments not related to the annexation or the annexation agreement will be requested to return to their seats. If you agree with comments made by a previous speaker, you can just state that you agree. We're going to ask that comments not be repetitive, to ensure that we get through all parties who would like to speak today. All individuals offering testimony will need to stand and be sworn at the beginning of the public hearing. I will do that at the conclusion of the housekeeping rules. All questions for Constellation will be addressed at the end of the public hearing comment portion of the meeting. Constellation may consolidate similar questions for a more efficient response. Constellation will be keeping track and recording all the questions that are asked from the public. Following Constellation's answers to all questions, each commissioner will then have an opportunity to make their own individual comments. In terms of running an efficient meeting, it is this council's suggestion to get through everyone that speakers limit their testimony or comments to five minutes or less. To be clear, this is not a rule. Our goal is just to make sure that every effort is made to have an efficient and fair process and have everyone have the opportunity to speak today. All comments are being transcribed verbatim by the court reporter, who is with us today. Ms. Siska is sitting in front of us, and it is important for the court reporter that you speak clearly into the microphone. The court reporter cannot take down multiple conversations at the same time. Please ensure that only one person speaks at any given time. Also, keep in mind, the court reporter cannot take down any hand gestures or the shaking of a head. The court reporter also will not take down any outbursts. The court reporter, for purposes of this transcript, it would be appreciated if you could state your full name and spell it, so it's accurate in the record. The hearing is also being video-recorded and livestreamed for any individuals who could not attend the hearing today. Just a reminder that anyone who is watching on the livestream version will not have the ability to participate. The only option to participate was to be here in person today. As the mayor suggested, please make sure to silence your phones, and we will now proceed to turn it back over to the mayor.
Thanks, Christina. Constellation, I believe you have some opening statements or comments?
Yes, I'll go ahead and swear. And if everyone who's going to speak, if they could please stand and raise their right hand. And if you're not sure if you're going to speak, go ahead and stand now, and you can make a decision to not speak later, okay? All right. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give at this hearing today be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you, God? All right. Ms. Siska, the record can reflect that all participants at the public hearing were sworn in.
Now entertain a motion to start our special meeting, public hearing.
I'll make a second.
Any discussion? Clerk?
Mayor Hollenbeck.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaminsky.
Aye.
Small.
Aye.
Shibe.
No.
Buckingham.
Aye.
Okay, now I'll turn it over to Constellation.
Well, good evening, everyone, and members of the commission. My name is Ryan Tozer, and I'm the Local Government Affairs Manager for Constellation. With me here is John Van Fleet, the Site Vice President of the LaSalle Clean Energy Center, Mike Applington, the Director of Commercial Project Management for Constellation, and Greg Smith, our outside legal counsel. Constellation is thrilled to appear before the City Council this evening to discuss an annexation agreement to bring approximately 175 acres of Constellation-owned land into the city of Marcells. The agreement represents a partnership between the city and Constellation for economic growth. The annexation of this property represents a once-in-a-generation opportunity for the city to achieve multiple goals, including growing its boundaries south of the Illinois River, securing new revenue sources, creating good-paying, high-quality jobs, and putting rules of the road in place for development of these opportunities. Tonight, we will explain our company's pro-growth strategy, the development of an emerging technology district that creates the opportunity for economic development, while protecting the local community and the financial safeguards for the city of Marcells. I would like to now introduce John Van Fleet, Site Vice President of the LaSalle Clean Energy Center.
Good evening. As Ryan said, my name's John Van Fleet, and I'm the Site Vice President at the LaSalle Clean Energy Center. It's an honor to be before you tonight. Many of you have family, friends, and neighbors who have or currently work at our nuclear station. Every day, the two boiling water reactors in LaSalle County produce a combined 2,320 megawatts of zero-emission electricity. Over 725 men and women work every day at our station. This includes professional and union employees. At one time, under previous ownership, the Illinois Nuclear Fleet was at risk of closing, but that is no longer the case. We are a pro-growth business under new ownership, and in order to guarantee long-term operation of our facility, we're becoming a clean energy center, rather than just a nuclear station. Our growth protects trade and craft jobs and renews our commitment to the community. This community is important to me and my colleagues. I grew up within 20 miles of the plant. My father-in-law worked at our plant for over 30 years. I've been able to provide for my family by working at the plant for 20 years. We have refurbished and improved over 100 homes in the area in conjunction with the United Way. We provide scholarships to Ottawa, Seneca, and Streeter schools and support local food pantries. But most importantly, every day, we produce clean and reliable energy, 24 hours a day, while maintaining excellence and safety in operations. I'll now turn it over to my colleagues, Mike Applington and Greg Smith, so they can discuss the annexation agreement and community economic benefits.
Good evening. I'm Michael Applington. I'm the Director of Commercial Project Management for Constellation. I thank the City Council and the Planning Commission for considering our request tonight. Constellation acquired several properties south of the Illinois River due to their proximity to LaSalle's Clean Energy Center and the potential to develop these with compatible uses. We are proposing to annex these properties totaling over a square mile into the city so that we can market to and attract customers. The vicinity of these properties to LaSalle Clean Energy Center allows Constellation to pursue development in partnership with the city and regional community. Also, the location of these parcels near to the nuclear station provides security and increased operations standards. Constellation has always viewed itself as part of the community. To this end, we discussed annexation with the city and listened to what the city said, that development should protect our small-town way of life, that the city must be financially protected, that no TIF district be used in financing, and that the city would like to avoid significant financial risks. The annexation agreement before a City Council achieves all of these goals and includes development provisions and incentives which are necessary for Constellation to obtain customers for the development of this land. The reality is that Constellation, Marcells, and LaSalle County are competing with other states, counties, and cities to attract development in the vicinity of large volumes of clean, carbon-free, and reliable electricity. Other nearby states and other municipalities in Illinois are working very hard to attract businesses that will bring investment and job creation. But we want economic development in LaSalle County and near our station to ensure operations for decades to come at LaSalle Clean Energy Center. We also want to improve the region's economic opportunities through partnership and planned growth. While we do not currently have a customer for this property, it is essential for our potential customers to know the community is open for business and understand that the rules, what the rules will be when they get here. The annexation agreement makes this location more competitive. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Greg Smith, our outside counsel for Constellation, to summarize the key terms of our annexation agreement.
Thank you. I'm an attorney with the law firm Elrod Friedman and outside legal counsel for Constellation in this matter. Thank you all for being here this afternoon. As Ryan, John, and Mike have indicated, Constellation has agreed to bring approximately 715 acres of its property into the city of Marcells. Constellation is willing to do so because the city commits in the annexation agreement to amend its comprehensive plan to encourage development of emerging technology uses on Constellation's properties, and because the city will amend its zoning code to create a new emerging technology zoning district to allow for development of uses including electronics manufacturing, storage facilities, fabricating uses, data centers, research and laboratory facilities, offices, and power generation. These are critically important terms which set the table for future development, and they were negotiated with the city to be the rules of the road for the development of this property. The agreement calls for Constellation to pay the city $10 million over five years, with payments of $3 million in years both one and two, $2 million paid in year three, and additional payments of $1 million in years four and five, with deductions in the final two years for property taxes and utility taxes paid. These payments by Constellation demonstrate its willingness to invest in Marcells, provide a significant new revenue source for the city to achieve its goals, and to meet the city's desire to be financially benefited by the annexation of these properties. Along those lines, the agreement also places responsibility on Constellation to pay for water extensions and sewer extensions necessary to serve the development. Constellation will also pay for the relocation of a portion of 2,553th Road, should relocation be desired. Again, these terms show that Constellation is a good partner to the city by taking on costs of public improvements that would otherwise be paid by the city. The agreement also includes a list of building codes requirements agreed upon, which are primarily 2024 international codes applicable across large portions of the state and elsewhere, which will regulate future development. Most of the codes that the development on this property will be subject to are more up-to-date than the city's on-the-books codes, meaning that development will meet even newer standards. Relatedly, the agreement also includes agreed-upon building permit fee of 23 cents per square foot for tenants' improvements, and requires reimbursement of the city's third-party costs for plan and permit reviews. Again, these terms shift financial obligations off the city and onto the development itself. The agreement has the city and Constellation entering into rebate agreements with respect to property taxes, utility taxes, and sales taxes. A rebate would only be given by the city if it receives these new revenues from the development. For property taxes, the rebate would only be paid after the city receives $2.5 million of property taxes in a given year, with that amount increased by a 3% compounding factor annually. For utility taxes, the rebate would only begin after the city receives $5 million of utility tax revenue, with that base amount also being increased by 3% compounding annually. For sales taxes, the city would split them 75% to 25%, up to a cap of $1.2 million, again with that cap compounding at the same 3% annual rate, with the amount over the cap being fully rebated to Constellation. The rebates would be in effect for 40 years. That term is long enough to allow for the design, construction, and ramp-up of new development on these properties, and to last for most of the useful life of the constructed buildings. Constellation received feedback that incentives for this length of time are key to attracting development interest that has not otherwise occurred. The structure of the rebates demonstrates Constellation's willingness to partner with the city, as only new city taxes will be rebated, and as the city will keep a significant portion of the new taxes for itself, allowing it to further enjoy the economic benefits of development of the property. Finally, the annexation agreement itself will have a term of 20 years, as allowed by law. I'll now turn back to Ryan Tozer.
Thanks, Greg. So to put this all into perspective, this agreed-to annexation package creates economic development and growth in the regional community, while providing Constellation Energy a competitive edge to attract customers who demand speed to market for themselves. There is no financial risk for the city. At worst, the city obtains $10 million and brings 715 acres into its borders. The proposed agreement does not require the city to spend any money or take any risk. Before closing, I do want to address a series any money or take any risk. Before closing, I do want to address a series of questions that I've been recently asked. First, one question I have received is, are you building a data center? The answer is, while these terms do allow for development of a data center, it does also allow for other industries. We currently do not have a customer. Let me repeat that. We do not have a customer, but this annexation gives us a competitive advantage for attracting a customer that would bring a significant job and investment. Second, will this raise local energy prices? Like you, I have seen my monthly energy bills go up. Unfortunately, that is something we cannot control. Over the past two decades, the cost of creating electricity, also called generation, has remained relatively flat. The cost of electricity delivered to homes and businesses is not controlled by Constellation Energy. However, the cost of delivery or distribution has greatly increased. And then lastly, how will Constellation protect the community? Constellation Energy has purchased a large swath of land so that wetlands near the river can be protected and berm's and other environmental attributes can be created to provide screenings and buffers to the development. In closing, I want to thank the City Council and Planning Commission for holding this hearing. Constellation is committed to this community in a strong partnership that will bring jobs and generational development to our city. Our team looks forward to listening to public discussion and concluding with answers at the end of the special city meeting. Thank you.
You done? Okay. Excuse me. I'll now ask our clerk to call the first person to testify, and we'll have two on deck along the wall, please.
First, we have Joe Bruno, then Karen Stilwell, and third will be Larry Cowie.
Joe, you're up if you want to talk.
Not now.
Oh, not now? Okay, then I guess Karen, you're up.
After Larry, we'll do Carrie Harrow.
Make sure she's hot.
My name is Karen Stillwell.
K-A-R-E-N-S-T-I-L-L-W-E-L-L. I'm a member of the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals. I've volunteered in those positions for many years. Actually, Patty Smith was our mayor at the time. Some of you may not even know Patty. My history with Marceaus goes back to the early 1900s. My great-grandfather came here from Wales. My grandmother, at age two, was never allowed to speak Welsh. You're an American, you speak English. That's kind of my history and how I've been raised. I've lived in Marceaus all of my life, although part of it was out in the country on a farm, still Marceaus. I've seen opportunities pass our small community by, more times than I'd like to think about. We have a wonderful community. We have wonderful people. We have great leaders. This opportunity, the Constellation, is served up on a silver platter. I want to thank them for that. I see an opportunity for a lot of jobs, for growth. We're not going to become an urban center by any means, but our town is going to get an opportunity to grow. Our young people may stick around. Wouldn't that be wonderful? We've seen nothing but, but good things come from Constellation, from the power plant. My children were raised on that money. My husband was there in '79 when there were only some beams that looked really scary to me. Couple things that I do, and I may be out of turn, if I am, forgive me, some things that I've heard, some of the, some of the information that was given to the Planning Commission and to the council members got up on Facebook, everything gets on Facebook somehow, and there were some questions about FOIA requests. I've read this. I've spoken to some of the attorneys, and my understanding, and I just want you to correct me if I'm wrong, that if there is a FOIA request, you're asking us to forward it to, to your financial, your, your legal people because you have proprietary information, you have safety information, you have patented information, I'm sure, that no corporation on the planet would want handed out to anyone. Am I correct? That's why there's that paragraph in our information regarding FOIA.
Karen, I think they're going to take note of the questions. They're going to answer them all toward the end.
That's fine.
So we can move along.
Okay. I'll stop. Thank you much, and welcome to Marceaus.
My name is Larry Cowie, C-O-W-I-E. I have been a resident of Marceaus for over 50 years. I'm addressing you this evening to voice my support for the annexation of property by Constellation Energy Generation. The city of Marceaus residents, based on 2024 EAV numbers, are responsible for approximately 74% of the property taxes paid to the city. 13% are paid by properties classified as commercial, and 12% are paid by those classified as industrial. By contrast, the Marceaus Fire Protection District, which encompasses only half of Constellation's LaSalle generating station, has a residential property tax contribution of 28% and an industrial property tax contribution of 63%. Seneca Fire, who has the other half of the generating station, has a residential burden of 17%. Seneca High School, which has all of it, 13%, and Seneca Grade 10%. This is not to imply that the proposed developments would be on the scale of the nuclear generating station, but to illustrate the value of diversifying the tax base. A taxing body relying predominantly on residential property taxes is not sustainable. If there were to be a $10 million increase in the taxable EAV of the industrial, commercial tax base of the city of Marceaus, it would result in a decrease in the residential tax burden by 7% to 67%. By comparison, the city of Ottawa's residential tax burden is now 72%, LaSalle is 67%, Peru 56%, Utica 51%, and Mendota 63%. The common complaint is that the taxes in Marceaus are too high. But looking at these numbers, you can see that the high taxes are not caused by out-of-control spending by government bodies, but by the fact that the burden is carried by the residents. I have no idea what the value of the proposed developments will be, but I think it's a safe bet that they will be substantial. I have seen some public comments critical of the tax rebate included in the annexation agreement. The way I read it, and was confirmed by a gentleman earlier, this would kick in if the city's portion of the tax bill for the development exceeds $2.5 million. I was curious as to what EAV and levy combination would trigger that rebate. I did some quick back-of-the-napkin math here, and using 2024 EAV numbers and the city's 2024 levy of 1.9 million, if the city were to double their tax levy to 3.8 million, it would take a development EAV of $166 million to trigger the rebate. If that would happen, the residential burden would then be 26%, and my city tax would go from $921 to 627. If the city would only levy one and a half times of the 2024 levy, or 2.8 million, the EAV of the development would have to be just over 500 million, and the burden on residents would be 11%, and my city tax would be $204. If they left the levy the same, at 1.9 million, technically, they could pay it all regardless of the EAV and not reach the trigger. This last one would never happen, but it's kind of interesting to think about. How much the city levies and what the EAV of the development would be is unknown at this time, but it's easy to see that it would take a lot for that rebate to kick in, so it's kind of a non-issue. Unfortunately, this increase in EAV will not have a direct impact on the Marceaus Elementary District. But let's look at the reasons why. The most obvious reason why is because that property is not in the boundaries of the school district. But let me explain a little bit of history. Prior to 1952, the children who lived in the vicinity of the current nuclear power station attended Marceaus High School. At some point, the school administration had a choice: create a high school district or become a unit school district of both grade and high schools with the boundaries roughly equal to that of the existing city boundaries. They chose the latter. Seneca chose the former. We all know how that decision has worked out. This is not to cast dispersions on the school administration of the time, but to highlight the missed opportunity. They couldn't see the future, but they felt secure in the fact that we had a thriving town. Nabisco was here, Certain Teed was here, PDM Steel was here, and others. They're now all gone. No one can predict the future, but passing on an opportunity guarantees you won't be able to benefit from it in the future. Think about how that one decision denied an opportunity, an opportunity that would have most likely changed the fortunes of the school district, literally and figuratively. Much has also been said about the general terms of the agreement, and the city should be calling the shots. I have had the good fortune for the last 36 years to be a witness to the relationship between a local taxing body that includes the nuclear power station and Constellation Energy and their predecessors. I have found the companies to be fair in their offerings. They understand they will pay taxes. They have no problem paying taxes. They just want to make sure they don't get taken advantage of. They want to be good corporate citizens. Let them be. Take a look at the surrounding taxing bodies that rely on them for their tax revenue. They seem to be doing okay, living under similar terms to what is proposed here. From what I have outlined this afternoon, it is crystal clear the positive benefits the annexation and development of this property will have to the residents of the city. I'm a realist, and this development is going to happen, whether here or somewhere else. Any of the purported negative effects on consumers may still happen, but why should we not receive the substantial benefits of it on the other You all were elected by the residents of Marceaus to represent them in matters pertaining to the operation of the city. There are tried and true processes in place which give you the tools and knowledge to make decisions. You have a responsibility and an obligation to be an active participant in those processes. While you most certainly can and should solicit feedback from the citizens, as we are blessed to be doing this evening, how you vote is up to you. You need to put emotions aside, have vision, and base your decisions on what is best for the future of the city, even if that decision may go against what you perceive as popular opinion. You aren't here to get re-elected. You are here to put the city on a course of success. It's your fiduciary duty and moral obligation to do so as a council member. One of you has publicly stated your intention to vote no this evening on this proposal. A no vote or abstaining this evening can and will be considered an egregious violation of your fiduciary responsibilities and moral obligation to the residents of the city of Marceaus and call into question your commitment to the future of this great city and how serious you are about your role on this council. This is a win for the city. It's time to start campaigning, acknowledge that win, and start governing. I leave you with this. To anyone who is considering voting against this, I challenge you to provide the residents a detailed plan to provide the tax relief to the residents on a scale that I have outlined here today, without any loss or deprecation of city services. We don't want soundbites, vague campaign promises, or hypotheticals. We want a concrete plan for our future. We'll be waiting, but not holding our breath. Thank you. And if anybody wants, if you guys, I have copies of my calculations, if you guys would like them.
I'll take a copy.
All right. I'll get them to you.
Larry, you can ask, Larry, you can ask Catherine to make copies and put them out on the table for people to pick up. Next, ma'am.
He's tall.
Ma'am, ma'am, just a moment. We're going to call two more folks.
Okay.
We have Jeff Owens and Jeff Olson next.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Carrie Harrow. It's C-A-R-R-I-E-H-E-R-R-O. I am the Chairman of the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce, and Jamie Kraken, our Executive Director, couldn't make it here this evening. There is a letter of his support, but I am here to, on behalf of the chamber, to express our support for Constellation's proposed annexation of the 700 acres in the Marceaus city limits. Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce is honored to serve the city of Marceaus, values our strong partnership with the local leadership and community. We also share a productive working relationship with Constellation and appreciate their continued investment in Marceaus and LaSalle County. As nation's leaders in carbon-free energy, Constellation exemplifies innovation, reliability, environmental responsibility. Their presence strengthens our local economy, expands employment opportunities, and reinforces the region's commitment for clean energy and sustainable growth. We respectfully support this proposed annexation and look forward to working together towards continued progress and shared success.
Thank you. Jeff?
Hi. Jeff Owens, O-W-E-N-S. I was going to speak about the problem with the school and the tax. My good friend Larry Cowie had done that very well. The other thing I was going to add, 30 years ago, I remember a city commissioner, he's passed away now, made a statement about that land out there. This is real growth. This is real growth. And I thought, okay. I was working part-time for the phone company. I put the phone lines in out there. I'm thinking, boy, is that real growth? It's taken us 30 years. We have the infrastructure out there. Finally, we do see real growth. I know there were some people commenting on when we annexed land out north, which started back in the 70s, probably the late 60s, all right, finally got out there. All towns our size need to grow to sustain themselves. So, thank you, Constellation, for this opportunity.
Thanks, Jeff. Jeff, number two's up.
Diane Towne is next, and then we have Brad Swanson.
Hi, I'm Jeff Olson, Mayor of Seneca, J-E-F-F-O-L-S-O-N. Sorry, my voice is pretty scratchy today. I was just coming on behalf of Seneca residents, of course. Ryan, I've had a lot of conversations with you. Obviously, this annexation agreement butts up right next to the Seneca city limits, right? It's a lot closer to Seneca residents in Marceaus, and many of them do have concerns, what's going to happen with this property. You know, there's going to be positive effects, and some of these Seneca residents have concerns they're going to have negative effects, correct? Depending if it's a data center or whatever it may become. I understand we're speaking annexation today, but you know, they have concerns on, you know, wells running dry, you know, just in history of data centers, the noise pollution, things along those lines. And my question is, is Constellation, will you include Seneca residents in those concerns and questions and when the time comes when you do have a customer? So, I wish Marceaus the best of luck. I think there's a lot of great things from Marceaus that can come from this. And of course, as was spoken on earlier, Constellation's been great for the, for Seneca as well, you know. So, like I said, there's, there's a lot of positive things that can come from this for everybody. So, but those are my questions and just how Constellation will address those with Seneca residents. So, good luck to Marceaus.
Thank you, Jeff. Diane?
Diane Towne, D-I-A-N-E-T-O-W-N-E. I think this is an important enough question that it should be put before the city of Marceaus residents. And that's, you know, can this be put before the residents for vote? I think there's enough people here that aren't just here to agree, and, and so, you know, we should have our voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Brad?
Jonathan Deering is next. Jonathan Deering is next. And then Heidi Henry. And our last one is Katie Quigley.
Yes, Bradley Swanson here. Just first and foremost, I want to say I'm all for the, the development of the economic community. I think it's a great thing for the city of Marcellus. I just have a couple of questions, I guess. Constellation said that they're keeping 175 acres, I think you guys said, for their own use. And I know you don't have customers or businesses coming in for the other use. What are your plans for the 175 acres? That's one question. I know you're not answering them now. But, and then the other question is, so when other businesses come in or corporations come in, are you gonna guarantee citizens from Marcellus, like a certain percentage of jobs to be held there? There's a lot of intelligent people in Marcellus, a lot of them are in the crowd right here. And I would love to know if you have, like, certain information on that. I personally have applied for Constellation twice and haven't heard anything. Nothing, you know? Go pound sand, you know? We might be interested, nothing. I have twenty-seven years of emerging technology experience and still nothing. So, I would love to, to hear those answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Jonathan?
Good evening, Jonathan Deering. I am the base operations manager for the Marcellus Training Center. We butt up against the west end of this annexation. Some years ago, when Constellation took over the plant, we had a long-lasting lease agreement on the east end, southeast end of our installation with Constellation, our, excuse me, Exelon. When Constellation took over, they said that they were gonna be looking to do development and that they weren't interested in continuing that lease agreement. These lands are well apart from where the annexation area is. If this new land is annexed, is Constellation willing to look back at that lease agreement? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Heidi?
Hi, Heidi Henry, H-E-N-R-Y. My question is, we're all so excited for opportunity to come to Marcellus. We've needed it for so very long in the thirty-five years I've lived here. In that area where you're planning to develop, when I was a child, I used to go duck hunting there with my dad. So, I'm very familiar with the wetlands that are out there because of the excellent duck and goose hunting out there. My question for the city is, because there's no customer yet, have you secured from Constellation a commitment to protect the air, water, land, and noise pollution that's going to come from these businesses? For those of us that live rural and have farms, now mine's on the other side of the river, it's really important to know that our way of life will be protected while bringing this beneficial opportunity to our community. That is my question. Thank you.
Kate?
Hello, my name is Kate Quigley, K-A-T-E-Q-U-I-G-L-E-Y. I've lived outside of Marcellus now for about eight years, and my husband works frequently within the nuclear plant-type settings and other plants. I would say my question pertains more to the environmental aspects as well. Looking at the LIDAR and the watershed aspects, and having the lock and dam right there already, the water's low. We're already in a drought year two. Imagining if a data center were to go there, that's a significant amount of heat, water, right next to, you know, a plant that already puts out a lot of heat, uses a lot of water, even though it is a more space within their system, what's the word I want, contained within that system? The, what are the environmental studies that have been done? Have we done environmental studies there for realizing if we do develop this land that, that is gonna be taken away for the wetlands? Are there prairies there? Are there remnant prairies? I'm not sure, I haven't explored that chunk of land yet. The, if there are remnant prairies and wetlands, those need to stay. We're, we've taken away so much already. The Constellation, you know, if you, I feel like learning about Marcellus would be great if you guys want to help out the community, get rid of the huge asbestos building. That'd be nice. The, you know, something like that, that would be beneficial for everybody. I'm grateful for the power that you guys supply, that, you know, there's safety regulations in place, but you don't even have a customer. Why, why are we gonna annex it now if you don't even have a guarantee that you would be able to pay the city that amount of money? That doesn't make sense to me. Why now? What's the point? What is your far-reaching plan environmentally? And for, you know, I'm thirty-three, I plan on living here for the next forty years, why not build more small modular nuclear plants now that you can? Why are we going for a data center? Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Pete, stand by a minute, unless he calls up two more.
That was it, unless Joe Bruno wants to talk. He was the last one on the sheet.
Okay. Did you register, sir?
No.
Okay.
Ask Joe if he wants to talk.
Hang on a minute. Joe, do you wanna talk, or are you gonna pass again?
I have one.
All right, go on deck. And is Catherine here? Can she get the gentleman's name in the back?
Where's Catherine?
Okay, wait a minute.
Joe Bruno, B-R-U-N-O. I don't have, I think some of the questions have been answered. I'm concerned, you're gonna approve Constellation, and they said they have a right to anything future. Is the city gonna be held for it? You're gonna provide water and sewer? When they put something in there, how much commitment will the city have on that? And also, I'm asking same as the other question. I'm concerned about the well. You know, I get, I get my water right down the road, and I know it's an opportunity, but if, here they're gonna plan to spend how much, million, how many dollars? Couple of dollars, I guess, to, to do something that they don't know what they're gonna do. And there's been a lot of secret here. A lot of time, you know, nobody can talk about this, you can't talk about this, you can't talk about that. And what is, I mean, I think there's probably been some negotiations. Now, the city is gonna provide water and sewer. If something else goes in there, they have the right to put whatever they want in, or is it, is it gonna have to come back to the city before they develop anything? So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, Pete, your turn now.
After Pete, it will be Floyd.
That's a hard act to follow, Joe Bruno. Peter Hall, H-A-L-L. Seventy-three years in Marcellus. I now live in St. Clair County in Illinois, Belleville. My family moved here, I'm the son of Ivan Hall. My dad was principal of Marcellus High School from 1952 to 1967. My dad was assistant superintendent of schools of LaSalle County from 1967 to 1982. Yeah, he created IVCC. And I, I lived, I lived in Ottawa from seventy-one to seventy-seven. My brother Don Lee Hall left the Rock Island Railroad, which he was a head of, in 1977. He worked out there, he was a head of the labors at Morrison that built the nuclear plant. And he is one of the people that went back, and I think it was 1982, that went and questioned the safety measures of that plant, which they went ahead and upgraded the safety measures of that plant. Soon after that, Three Mile Island happened. And we all know the effects of that. I moved to Marcellus in 1977, and I built a house there because Commonwealth Edison, under Illinois Power, and we were under Illinois Power, said, oh, let's put a heat pump in because we're gonna take the meters off after five years, and all the power will be free. Of course, we all know what happened, the expense here. And they mentioned 1952. 1952, when Marcellus went, went unit district, it got our family up here. Because Marcellus was the lowest tax school system in nineteen, in the early fifties in the state of Illinois, because it was just took that Marcellus resident, ComEd, not, Certain Teed and Nabisco and everything. In 1967, I remember before I was drafted, we had the president of the Seneca School Board wanting to come up and join with Marcellus to their school system. But then later, ComEd came and changed everything, to our educational programs and everything on our tax base. I'm, I'm really kind of questioning because I have relatives right here in this hat, out in Massachusetts right now, that questions, why are we getting so much from our fossil fuels? People don't, I, I have, I have relatives that are scientists. Whether you know it or not, we're taking too much fossil energy out of the northern hemisphere. That's where the melting. But always remember, this is why I think we're kinda going a little bit solar, a little bit energy. But also, also, I know what ComEd's doing out there, too. You're going to do more of the geothermal. That's kind of a fine line in this, on the world's energy. And I hope we do it right. And I really hope this: you listen to all the scientists. You listen to all the scientists, because what I'm afraid of right now is greed is taking control of our world. We have to start respecting our human rights and our human response. And thank you. And I hope, and God bless ComEd and Conciliation and everything, too. I really am favored that. But I, it, it's really, we're, we're all in this together. We're all in this thing together, we have now. And thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Floyd Jones, and then Bob Haughey.
Floyd Jones, F-L-O-Y-D-J-O-N-E-S. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Floyd Jones. Been a proud member of IBW Local 176, electrician for thirty-two years. In the past five years, I've had the honor of serving as president of Illinois Valley Building Trades. I've spent my career working alongside men and women who build the backbone of this region, the roads, schools, plants, power facilities that keep this community running. This afternoon, I wanted to talk about an opportunity, the proposed annexation of 715 acres of land to the Constellation Energy, and why it's a step forward, not just from Marcellus, but our entire area. Let's start with what this means for working families. This development, annexation brings real jobs, hundreds of good-paying construction jobs that will directly employ skilled local tradesmen and women, electricians, pipe fitters, iron workers, operators, laborers, sheet metal workers, you name it. These aren't temporary out-of-town crews. These are our neighbors, our brothers, our sisters, people who live here, buy groceries here, and send their kids to school here. And beyond construction, for the future development, Constellation's investment means a long-term operations, jobs, stable, high-quality employment that will keep people working for decades. That kind of stability keeps young people in our communities and supports small businesses up and down Main Street. Economically, the benefits ripple even farther. The influx of workers will mean more businesses, more business for local restaurants, hotels, gas stations, and suppliers. Every paycheck spent here multiplies through our local economy. And let's not forget one of the most important impacts: tax revenue. Annexing this land and bringing this development to Marcellus means millions of new dollars flowing into local coffers, supporting schools, emergency services, and infrastructure. That's more funding for teachers, better resources for students, and stronger city services without raising taxes on the current residents. This is the kind of project, and with this annexation, it builds a community's future. It keeps our trade strong, supports our schools, and ensures Marcellus remains a place where families want to live, work, and raise their kids. I've seen, now I've seen a lot of projects come and go in my three decades in the trades, and I can tell you, opportunities like this don't come around often. This annexation is a chance for Marcellus to grow smartly, responsibly, and in partnership with a company that's proven its commitment to energy, safety, and local workforce. So, I'm asking you this afternoon, as someone who's spent a lifetime wiring and building this community from the ground up, to look at this annexation not as a risk, but as an investment. An investment in our people, our economy, and our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Floyd. Bob?
Sorry about that. Most of you guys know me here. I've been a resident since 1989. Seen a lot of things happen in our little town in those years I've been here. For too many years, Marcellus has been behind the times when it comes to prosperity, innovation, and progressive thinking. The industry that once supported the majority of our families in our community has been sitting empty for over two decades. There've been a few interested parties that have considered investing in the now- abandoned Nabisco building, and the sad truth is, competent investors have never been willing to invest their own money into our fledging community. Then we have Glengarry Brick that closed in 2023. We lost about forty local jobs there. Just recently, this building here, Illinois Valley Center, we lost a couple of years ago, fifty people without jobs. So, we've lost our share in this little town. The land that we're discussing this evening, which was annexed into the city over twenty-five years ago, was supposed to be our heritage harbor like Ottawa, our big housing boom. As we all know, that dream never came to fruition. With hope for growth that never happened, we watched as other communities expanded their school systems while we closed ours. Other small towns had population growth. With Marcellus' struggle to do that, our population actually has gone down. As we sit here debating whether or not this is the right fit for our community, the fact remains: the land has been purchased, and shovels will be in the ground at some point, and that's a fact that's not gonna go away. Do we just wait for something else and be passed over once again? While the likes of Seneca High School, no offense, Brookfield Township, LaSalle County reap the benefits of a project like this. I, for one, am not willing to just sit back and watch Marcellus pass opportunity any longer. With this agreement, we'll see an influx of revenue that's gonna assist with the completion of several projects for our small town, such as lead waterline replacement, maybe sanitary sewer, system improvements, along with street improvements, projects that are just too numerous, too numerous to list. There's a lot of stuff that we can use that money for. We can also improve that infrastructure south of the building, a river that's been a problem for all these years. I've asked around T+ City Hall here what the hurdles are that we had to overcome while operating the facilities out there south of the river. Since year 2000, Fund 52-10, which serves the wastewater system south of the river, is over $350,000 in debt. This is not due to extravagant spending, but rather a lack of sustained revenue over the last twenty-plus years. Additionally, the South Water Tower has issues with freezing during the harsh winter months because there's lack of usage that keeps the water flowing. Maybe a commercial development will be just what we need to not only offset the years of operating in the red, but also provide us with enough demand to properly operate that water tower throughout the year. There's other issues considered, such as a lack of revenue to maintain those roads out there, the bridges, lift stations, the wastewater facility, all the stuff out there that's been kind of let go because it hasn't been affordable, take care of it. Whether commercial development on this property- Whether commercial development on this property creates fifty jobs or four hundred jobs, it might just be the boost our local economy needs to become a thriving community. Tonight's our opportunity, our opportunity to capitalize on opportunities that we've lost over the past twenty-five years. So I ask all of you these two questions, why not Marcell's and why not now? Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Yes?
If, if I have like three more thoughts that are short, could I say them?
Okay.
They are short for me. Which is hilarious if you know me. Thank you, I appreciate it. A couple of thoughts that, oh, sorry, Kate Quigley, Q-U-I-G, okay. Thank you for letting me speak again really quick. I've noticed as some of the, um, have lived here longer people that have spoken a bit about the history, about how this town has been constructed and things like that, when they're talking about construction, that's nice. Guess what? That goes away real quick. I watched the construction of, you know, massive semi-building storage places, they're hideous. If this potential, let's just go with it, there's probably going to be a data center, that's what all the towns are building, um, why does every town need it? If those construction jobs, that's great, you have forty people working for two years, three years, maybe? Then that goes away. Data centers usually hire on-staff about, at most, twenty people, if that, for a, you know, three-hundred-acre building? There's no point to that. The, you know, benefits of looking five, ten, fifteen years down the road, we don't have a customer. It's beautiful land there, yes. It should be utilized, yes. But again, why annex it now? So buildings start going up? Okay. What's the plan for that? Did you do the due process behind it? And I agree with, I don't remember her name, but one of the first ladies to speak, can, once it's done or once the project is considered, do the people of the town get a vote or is it just our city council? And I don't understand or honestly pay attention to all the fancy little ordinance bits and how that works, and I'm out in the country, so it's not as bad, but it does cause concern when I see this many people of our town worried about this annexation, is it beneficial? Is it harmful? And I look out there and I don't see very many people my age. It's a concern. Where's the young people that this is going to affect longer? Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak and has an?
My name is Bob Davis, and I'm in the middle of seven generations that have lived in this town. And I had some experience with the finances. And during that period of time, we've had industries come and look, and they always wanted a lot from the city to come in and take advantage of what we had to offer. And, um, to paraphrase Shakespeare, "There's a tide that comes along in the history of individuals when taken at the flood leads to prosperity, when not taken, in the end, leads to despair and other things." And this is the first company that I'm familiar with that has come in and has been willing to invest a lot of money without asking a lot from the city. They have not asked for cities to increase their infrastructure, and if there is things that has to be done, they have made commitments to take care of that increase. And they talk about, um, that they do not yet have what they want to build, but I will tell you, and I don't know this for a fact, I'm just guessing, they are not willing to commit ten million dollars to this project without being in the process of probably finalizing who they want to bring in. I'll tell you also that if this passes, whatever they do decide to bring in has to come again before the city, for the city to approve. So they are not given carte blanche by just the city asking them, or they're asking the city to be part of their annexation into the city. The city has probably already spent some money. You don't have your people, lawyers, and other people looking over these projects, these final projects, without paying. But what they have asked from the city is extremely minimal. I believe the last, uh, amount of revenue that the city taxed for was seventeen-point-five million, something like that. And what they're promising to bring in is about seventeen percent of the budget. And city financing really is not all that complex when you look at it very simply. You tax to hopefully at least stay where you're at without increasing the tax rate. If as citizens you want lower taxes, there's two ways the city can do it. But the chief way is that you have to reduce your spending, you have to make cuts. You're not going to get tax relief and keep the same standards that you have right now because everything that the city doesn't control goes up. So an influx of ten million dollars, which if, my understanding is if they don't get any industry to come in there, they're still committed to this as a result of annexation. So it seems to me, and it's saying very simply, that a yes vote is you're voting for progress and the possibility of fewer taxes, or at least no more new taxes to sustain what you have now. If you vote no, you're voting for stagnation and deterioration of things which we have seen over the years. So I would request for the committee who is considering this on the basis of what I know about it, which there are things that I don't know because I have not been privy to it, but from what I have seen, a yes vote is for progress and a no vote is for stagnation. It's as simple as I could make it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob.
Hello, um, my name is Nick Mancusso. I live at seven-zero-seven Forest Drive. Um, I apologize.
Nick, could you please spell your name for the court reporter, please? Your last name?
Yes, M-A-N-C-U-S-O. I apologize for coming in late. You probably already answered this question. By annexing this property into this, into the city, that allows us to put covenants on this property, uh, what type of covenants are going to be placed to protect the environment and the, uh, people living around this, uh, area? There's been a lot of concerns for noise, lighting, um, water usage, uh, a lot of the barge traffic is currently stopped because of low, uh, water levels. How much water is that going to, uh, is it going to use? How is it going to affect our wells? Um, most of the areas, south of that area are all on wells, and so there's, those are a few of the questions I wanted answered.
Okay, Nick, thank you. Constellation is making note of the questions and are going to answer them all at the end.
Is there anybody else that would like to talk that doesn't have a chance?
Thank you for this opportunity. Uh, I'm Truman McGeorge, M-C-G-E-O-R-G-E. I'm the chairman of the Illinois River Area Chamber of Commerce. The mission of the Chamber of Commerce are to, uh, work with businesses to, uh, enhance, uh, the, the town and, uh, and, you know, work together. I'm not very good at this, bear with me. I've been here, uh, since I was five years old, uh, originally Seneca, now Marcell's. I remember, Marcell's hasn't changed a whole lot, you know, since I was young. And there was another little town that, uh, was almost nothing. It was a, basically a suburb of LaSalle, and that's Peru. They have warehouses, businesses, all around the outer edge of their town, and, uh, look what Peru is now. No one would ever thought that. Just another little thing about working together, uh, I remember the old Ottawa, I think you all do, and now you know what it is now. Uh, some years ago, probably I'd say ten years, maybe a little more, uh, some citizens, businesses, and, uh, the, the city hall worked together to improve that town. They worked together, and now look what it is. Uh, Streeter has taken up the mantle to follow in the, uh, footsteps of Ottawa, got a beautiful park, murals, and so forth, everybody working together. Uh, there, there's, I think there's going to be, uh, some few problems, and there always are, and hopefully they can be worked out. If everybody works together, I think things can be worked out down the road. Uh, if you look ahead and, uh, realize what's happening, uh, at Holderman Hill, there is, uh, Route Eighty swings down that way, and there you have, uh, the river for commerce, you have the railroad, and you have an interstate, all within two miles. That carries on to the other side of LaSalle-Peru, where the, down there somewhere, I think it's, uh, the, the Illinois River cuts sharp south and goes south. You've got this narrow area with these three things for transportation, plus you have a nuclear plant. It's just common sense, this is going to happen. So I think we should work together, make the best of it.
Thank you, Truman. Is that everybody?
Hey there, I'm Michael Muncy, M-U-N-C-Y. Uh, I'd like to start out by saying I think there's a fundamental lag of understanding how technology is going to play a future role in the small towns and, and the nation overall. So we're looking at things like AGI, AI development, and robotics. What are those a need? Generally, computing power, computing power needs power generation. That's what this company specializes in. They're going to get customers for it. And what that means for us is in the future, hundreds of jobs, thousands of jobs, will only take a handful of people to actually complete production. What that means for us is that a majority of us are probably going to get laid off from our jobs, and we're going to be banking on a lump sum of money from this deal to keep carrying us through. What starts off as millions for us right now is going to end up generating billions of dollars for this company, and we're going to get the raw in the deal, and we're going to see that Marcell's yet again came so close to getting something great, and instead we negotiated a forty-year deal. We shouldn't negotiate for ten or fifteen years, and we'll just, it'll all pass us by yet again. Because this is the development for this technology, seven to fifteen years, and instead they're going to lock us in for forty. So we're going to get this great deal for the first five years, and oh crap, what happens? They're generating hundreds of billions of dollars off of a hundred and some acres, and we're getting ten million dollars out of the whole thing. And if you're lucky, there's not going to be environmental damage, which there most likely will be, too. So that's somebody to think about, I'm yes for progress, but I'm no for getting a raw deal at the end of this thing. We should consider our families when city council votes on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. If there's nobody else that wishes to speak, I'm going to turn it back over to Constellation to answer the questions that have been posed here this evening.
Could we take a five-minute recess so we can compile the questions and?
Absolutely, absolutely. Let's take, well, let's do, yeah, let's do at least a five-minute recess. Anybody needs to use the restrooms, there's some right through that door there, and there's some through that door there and to the right through the community room. And there's some through that door there and to the right through the community room.
All right, following a very short recess, we're going to go back on the record and continue with the public hearing.
Next up, we'll have Constellation respond to the questions that were answered during the public meeting.
Well, thank you, Mayor Hollenbeck and members of the commission in public. I really appreciate this opportunity for us to come and present tonight to you. To the best of my ability, I'm going to try to answer a couple of questions and then turn it over to Greg for a little bit of follow-up. First, Greg informed me that my dyslexia kicked in about the question about 175 acres being held back. The total is 715 acres approximately. And so I apologize if that was a mistake. And then second, and we had a question from the city of Seneca and National Guard. We want to continue to have a robust conversation with you guys and keep you guys informed. With that, I'll turn it over to Gregory.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm going to answer a series of questions or touch on a series of topics that were made in approximately the order that they were made by speakers during tonight's testimony. And once I conclude my comments, then we would turn back to the mayor's chair of the meeting to continue the public hearing. First, there was a comment about the Freedom of Information Act provisions in the annexation agreement. It is true that the annexation agreement includes such a provision. And as the speaker indicated, given the confidential and highly sensitive nature of plans for development of emerging technology uses, which may include things like security plans and proprietary materials, the city and Constellation have agreed to coordinate and jointly review and work on these responses in order to ensure that the safety and security of the facilities is not put at risk. Next, Ryan addressed the matter of 175 versus 751 acres. Thank you. There's a question about jobs and jobs for residents within the development. Without a customer, Constellation cannot speculate on hiring, but any new facility would likely require hundreds of temporary construction jobs. The number of permanent operational jobs, once the project is complete, would depend on the specific project and customer. There were several comments about potential impacts on other properties. Any development that is undertaken on this property must comply with all applicable city, state and federal regulations. In addition, due to the size of the property, there is room for buffers and other methods to minimize impacts if necessary. With regard to questions about the water system and water usage, as I noted during my introductory comments under the annexation agreement, if any extensions of the water system are necessary to serve the development, those extensions will be funded by Constellation. With respect to water usage, because there is no customer, Constellation cannot forecast what the water demand will be. But all development, as I just indicated, must comply with all city, state and federal permitting requirements relating to water usage. A speaker mentioned the $10 million payment and asked if, appeared to ask for confirmation. And I can confirm, as noted in my comments earlier, that the $10 million worth of payments by Constellation will be made even if no development occurs on the property. Finally, as to the question of why now? This, Constellation is bringing this, has brought this matter forward with the city. And the terms of the agreement, including the incentives, are needed due to competitions with other cities and states for customers in the emerging technology space. This agreement sets forth the rules of the road and provides certainty to Constellation and customers so that development can commence. Mayor, with that, I turn back to you.
Is that everything? Okay, thank you. We'll now move along to the next item on the agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read number one. Okay, hold it.
I'm sorry, Mayor, we need to make a motion to go ahead and close the hearing.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Could I just add at approximately 5:41 so the time is reflected?
Okay, thank you. We got a motion. You got a second?
I second it.
Oh, who made the motion?
I'll make the motion. All right, I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion made by Kaminsky, seconded by Buckingham. Clerk can read the roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Aye.
Small?
Aye.
Shibe?
No.
Buckingham?
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck?
Aye.
Jim light up their mics.
When I get to you, well, right now...